All right. I've got six thirty, then I see we have a quorum, so I will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. Uh, first item up is approval of consent agenda. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers totaling fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Uh, we also have several minutes to approve. Uh, we have minutes from our seven-five twenty-twenty-two, seven-twenty-six twenty-twenty-two, and eight-two twenty-twenty-two meetings. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any corrections or comments regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Oh, my goodness. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. We are now into our, uh, first public comment opportunity, and, uh, do we have any members of the public online, Mr. Styles?
No, I believe Will is with the Free Press today, uh, covering the Free Press, and everybody else is, uh, we've got Andrew and Danielle Hollingshead from, uh, Adams Brown, and then Phyllis and so on, so, okay.
And I see no members of the public present in the room. So we will dispense with our first public comment opportunity and move right into the audit for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Mr. Styles?
I'll just hand it over to Danielle. Danielle, can you hear us?
Hi, sure can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I am.
Alrighty, um, do you want me to share my screen, or do you want me just to, uh, tell you page numbers? I can do either.
You can do either, um. Doesn't matter to me, uh, I, you know, if you want to share, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, can you see that?
Yep, we can.
Okay, alright, um, this is the, I'm gonna start with a bound copy of the audit report, and then we'll go through the letter. So, um, just starting with pages one, two, and three, and this is our independent auditor's report. Um, it does look a little bit different than it has in the past because they, uh, had a new update this year, so right off the get-go, they give you the opinion. And you do receive an adverse opinion because you, um, waive GAAP, but you do get an unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting, and that's the highest opinion or cleanest opinion you can receive, and we basically, um, state that we don't believe there are any material misstatements within the financials. Um, this letter also goes through what management is in charge of, um, what their responsibilities are versus what the auditor's responsibilities are for the financial statements. And then on page four and five, this is where we, um, the financial statement that we're issuing that opinion on, and, um, the city, uh, pools their cash together, and also this is a collective statement of all the funds. And at the end of the year, there was two-point-eight million in unencumbered, unencumbered cash, and you can see here that it's a decrease of about three-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, um, from the prior year. And a lot of that is in the business funds, so, um, some of those reserves were used up in twenty-twenty-one. Um, the next several pages are the notes to the financials. K-MAG didn't have any huge updates this year or any cha- huge changes this year, so I won't go through, um, any of these footnotes specifically, but it does go through the policies, um, and the, the different, um, explanations of some of the things that the city follows to put these financials together. Um, there is also on page eleven, we do have to go over statute compliance, um, with, uh, a whole checklist of things that we have to go through, um, on statutes that the city is supposed to be following. So we did have a couple violations there this year. The general fund did exceed the budget, um, authority. And then the city is required to publish financial statements within thirty days after quarter end. Um, and so there, there was some quarters that that didn't happen, um, and so we have a violation there. Um, and then I'm just gonna flip on over to the long-term debt schedule, which is on page eighteen. Um, at the end of the year, you had fourteen million, three-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand outstanding, um, for the city. And then we also have the PBC on here, which has one-point-four-million, um, expected date of twenty forty-two for these to all be paid off, assuming no more debt. And then the last several pages are the individual fund financial statements, um, and it gives a comparative to the prior year, so it gives you a better picture of how the year went in each fund. Um, I won't go through any of these individual funds, but if there is one that you have some questions on, I can flip to it, and we can discuss those. Did you guys receive the financials ahead of time, or this is the first time seeing them?
Okay. No, it was in the, in the packet.
Packet, perfect. Um, I'll go through this letter too, and then if you guys have any questions come up, we can discuss those. Um, there's also a letter that's probably at the front of the, the packet, and this is just kind of an, an overall letter to kind of go through any significant audit matters that we have, if we had any difficulties we ran into, or any, um, disagreements with management. We didn't have any of the sort, um, so you won't see any, anything in there for that, but we do also put in here if we have any audit recommendations as we're, um, going through our procedures. And there is a couple, um, just gen- generic, just minor ones, I guess, that we did recommend a quarterly payroll reconciliation to be, to be completed. Um, this just ensures that before you submit those nine forty-ones to the IRS, that if they're correct, uh, it's not fun to have to deal with IRS letters, so we just always recommend that reconciliation be done first. Um, the second one is in regards to the land bank, since the land bank is a separate entity of the city, it needs to really have its own bank account. And then, um, we just recommend that a budget to actual report be monitored very closely, um, to ensure that there are no cash or budget violations. And then on the last page is our more significant, um, recommendations or internal controlled deficiencies that we had. There was a couple this year. The first one is on encumbrances and accounts payable. Um, there was one encumbrance and two accounts payable that were missed at the end of the year, um, and they ended up being a material amount, so we did have to book those, so that is showing up as a material weakness this year. And then the last one is, um, in regards to proper segregation of duties. This one's been on there for a long time. Um, I do think that they're on, they're well on their way to maybe getting rid of this one. Um, when you have enough people in place to, uh, handle each accounting system, um, you can get this one off, um, but it just takes a lot of, um, thinking and follow-through on procedures and making sure that everything's covered and there's good controls, um, backing them up, so, um, this one hopefully maybe will come off next year. And that is the audit in a nutshell. Um, do you have any questions for me?
Any, any questions? Doesn't look like we have any questions, Danielle.
Okay, well, thank you. You guys all have a good evening, and I want to thank the staff too. I know this year was first year for Danielle, and she did a great job getting us everything we needed, and we worked through a lot of things together, lots of learning moments, so, um, thank you to the staff too for helping us get this done.
I will say before you, before you take off, Danielle, that, that, uh, you know, the, the issues that, uh, that you did bring up, I think, again, were very much attributable to, uh, to a staff, uh, uh, turnover and then new people coming on board. And also, uh, you know, when you have people that, uh, in Jan's case, you know, was here forty-two years, and pretty used to doing things a certain way, you know, there's, uh, there's always an opportunity when, uh, when new people come, come along to, uh, make some changes in those areas, and so I feel personally like we're seeing a lot of positive changes and, uh, not taking away anything from the past, but I think for the future and looking forward, I'm very, very pleased with the, uh, direction we're headed. We're looking at more automation opportunities and, uh, making this thing run a little bit smoother, maybe simplifying some things, so I'm excited about the future, and then, you know, we'll get through these glitches, but, uh, you know, at the end of the day, there's nothing, again, materially wrong with, with the auditor, with the, with the reporting of the city's finances, and so my hat's off to Danielle and her staff and Matt for, uh, for helping us, you know, get along and learning experiences will happen, and let's just make the most of them, and I'm excited for the future, so. And thank you again, Danielle, for, uh, looking over our shoulder and making sure we're, uh, staying on the right path, okay?
Yeah, I, 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 you're very welcome, and I, I really did enjoy working with them and continue to work with them in the future, so I will let you guys go and, and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
We'll do our best. Okay. Any other comments before we move on? All right, next item up is our business section. First item is we've got test three ordinances and municipal court order and executive session tonight, so. Uh, let's see how we handle these. Let's go to ordinance thirteen fifty-seven, excessive BOD charges, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. This is a follow-up to our conversation at the last meeting. Uh, you know, just to kind of give a refresh about the BOD, it's, you know, biological oxygen demand, it's the bad things in our wastewater that take, uh, that are excessively concentrated. Um, and so we talked about last, uh, last meeting about, you know, what we should do with that, the way things are structured currently in our ordinance, we have the ability to charge for it, but there's really no direction to do that. Um, and so what we've got in, uh, the proposed ordinance, um, is, you know, it sets a rate for that, so point two or twenty-four cents, I guess, per pound BOD in excess of our limits. Limits don't change, everything stays the same there. Uh, those are pretty consistent across the state from what we, what we're able, able to determine. Um, section fifteen-six forty is probably the one that's most interesting. Uh, so this lays out a testing protocol, what we would have to do if we suspect that somebody has high concentrations of BOD or anything else that comes into the wastewater. We have to have some sort of testing protocol, um, and so we would, uh, in this case, we would go and do monthly testing where we could grab samples and send those off for independent verification at a laboratory. Uh, if, for whatever reason, the determination of that sample was not, uh, agreeable with the person we were sampling from, they would have the option to independently do that. Um, and we did confirm that Pace Labs, which is the lab we primarily use, will come out and do that for people. Uh, it's not kind of a normal thing, but they will come out and do this. They will take the samples and test those. Um, the, basically in that case, the city gets a sample and the, the customer gets a sample, and we run tests on both of them, so that there's com- comfort, a comparison that we can do between the two of them. Obviously, if we had, uh, had that situation come up, we would send ours to a different lab than was testing the one that came out to do the, uh, customer's test, so. Um, and if there's a discrepancy within that, uh, then we can do yet another test, so. Uh, that's kind of the, the, the testing protocol that we came up with. We did talk about having some kind of a dispute process with customers. I don't know that you really want to get into that. We didn't really put one in here. Um, the numbers are kind of what the numbers are. Um, so there's, there's plenty of opportunity to have it retested within this ordinance. Uh, but I don't know that you really want to get into hearing objections from a city council perspective. Uh, it kind of sets you up to be in, in kind of a compromising position potentially, if, uh, you know, you're making a decision based on somebody's complaint. And then we have another person come up and test, you know, that might not. You, 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 you're opening the door to some liability there that I don't think you really need to, um, and so we didn't put that in there, um, and Andrew can, if, if there is something that Andrew wants to say about that, you're more than welcome to, Andrew. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
No, I, I mean, I agree with that, with that perspective.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of how we, we went forward with it. That's, that's how the ordinance reads. There's a, you know, a, a protocol for if there is a discrepancy, but we kept the city council out of that, and I think that's probably for the best on that. Um, financial impact, I have no idea what this is gonna look like, honestly. We know we've got a few people who have higher, higher levels of BOD. Um, we know there's some, some people in the system already on testing standards with KDHE. We don't, we don't mess with their testing right now, but, uh, you know, if it became an issue, we could certainly do that. Know that a lot of those people are on, uh, actually on the east side of town, or the west side of town, so, um, you know, we don't really know what this will be, but we feel like when we looked at where everybody else was, that this was not an excessive charge, and it is based on what our wastewater engineers felt like was the cost, true cost to us to actually process BOD, so. Uh, if you're wanting to proceed, we're recommending, uh, approval of ordinance thirteen fifty-seven.
Okay, before we, uh, go any further, I've, uh, been requested by Councilman Driggers that he be recused from this discussion. So at this time, we will, uh, let you leave the room and we will carry on.
So if we move tonight to approve it, when would people know that there's a charge that could be coming if they exceed?
So it would take effect once it's published in the newspaper, but we're not in a position to really start doing it just yet, so we would probably have sixty days before we would really start.
I just didn't see that in here.
Yeah, it would just take effect as it goes in. I mean, it's not a, it's not a charge to everybody. I mean, obviously, we would still need to do some auditing to figure out, you know, where, where we think those issues could be.
Any other questions? Again, this is something that, uh, as we discussed in the past, if we don't take some action now, you know, we're gonna, somebody else is going to. And, uh, I'd rather be proactive than reactive in that situation. I think it would be to everybody in the city of Hillsborough's benefit in that, that case.
Especially from KDHE.
That's exactly what I'm referring to. Yeah, we don't need to, you know, let's, uh, let's, let's be proactive and, and, uh, you know, that's generally words off some bad things, uh, you know, that could happen potentially, so. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'd accept, uh, a motion to approve ordinance or adopt ordinance thirteen fifty-seven. We're adopting it, correct?
Correct.
And, uh, authorize the mayor to sign. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman Lowen, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council. Councilman by?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty? Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
All right, ordinance thirteen fifty-seven is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Thank you, and I will go bring Councilman Driggers back. Next ordinance up on the, uh, on the ordinances right is ordinance thirteen fifty-eight, adopting the twenty-twenty-two UPC or UPOC code, which is something we do whenever that gets updated. So, Mr. Styles?
Yeah, thank you, sir. So that, that's exactly right. Every year, we adopt the newest edition of the Uniform Public Defense Code and the Standard Traffic Ordinance, so you'll have both those here in front of you. Uh, Triple Loaf and Garrettson, Andrew put together a, uh, list of sort of the changes that are in there, so you can kind of walk through those if you want to. They're all fairly minor. Um, there's some updates on language about controlled substances, uh, we're mirroring some of the language in, uh, controlled substances schedules. Uh, there's advanced voting site things, which we actually addressed last year, uh, with that thing with advanced voting. There's a court case regarding that. Uh, there's minors, some minor word changes, um, some things about electric assisted bicycles, which is kind of interesting. Um, you know, mostly for the UPOC, it's pretty, pretty standard stuff, so. Uh, we were just asking for adoption of the, uh, of ordinance thirteen fifty-eight to incorporate that by reference.
I have a question. Maybe this is, uh, to Andrew. We, we've adopted and, and previous ordinance regarding, um, street legal golf carts, side-by-sides, other, uh, UTVs, ATVs. This does not impact that, or negate any of that former action, does it?
No, the former actions that we've taken have all been written in a way that, um, that say that they are, to the extent that those are inconsistent with future versions of the UPOC or the SDO, that, that our specific provisions will still apply, so I, I'm comfortable that, that what we've done in the past will remain in effect.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions regarding the twenty-twenty-two UPOC? Hearing none, I'd accept a, uh, motion to adopt ordinance thirteen fifty-eight to, uh, in turn, adopt the twenty-twenty-two Uniform Public Defense Code and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, councilman by?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Um, ordinance thirteen fifty-eight is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Next ordinance up is thirteen fifty-nine, adopting the twenty-twenty-two standard traffic ordinance, Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So, uh, same, same kind of situation with the, the SDO. We adopt these every year. Uh, this is the updated version. They spent a lot of time in legislature this year talking about electric assisted bicycles. Um, and so a lot of, a lot of the changes in the SDO are excluding the electrical, electrically assisted bicycles, um, from, from some of these other regulations. Uh, I will say that the standard traffic ordinance is one that, uh, we write a lot of tickets out of. Uh, if, if somebody's in, in the police department is writing a ticket, they typically will refer to something in the SDO. Uh, if there's not already a statute specifically on the books for the city of Hillsborough, so it is important that we maintain that and we keep it consistent with what the state laws are.
Any questions?
I have one question on the bicycles.
Hmm.
Is it the scooters fit in the same realm, or is that?
Good question.
I was wondering too if Linda's an electric bicycle, but come, electric, uh,
Yeah.
motorcycle.
Yeah, it's, it was.
When you take the pedals off?
It just seems like some definition things that are gonna get tough.
Yeah.
And how long the cord is.
How long the cord is?
Well, it's not, it doesn't put it out of that much. I was just curious.
That's a good question. I don't know that I can answer that, Brett.
Andrew, do you have any comments?
I, I don't know that I can answer it either. I mean, they go through and they sort of update these definitions every year for various changes in state law and what the, you know, the legislature and the league thinks are um, necessary adjustments to, to those things, and and I, you know, I didn't go back and ask them a specific question about why they updated the definitions of these, uh, vehicles and, you know, when, when that would, when that would go into those scooters versus electric bikes, but it, it's certainly something we, we can ask if it's a, if it's a concern. And, and it's also something that if, if we decide there is an issue there, we can adjust it later, you know, to fit your desires.
I think it might have to do with some of those electric scooter companies, like in, um, Wichita, for example, they have the electric skiers you can just lease and literally can drop anywhere, which.
It's a good question.
You know, that's a.
And so those don't, you don't need to show a driver's license or anything.
You said have a credit card, and so maybe some of that's.
Don't they treat those like if, in Wichita, like if you're under the influence and you get stopped, I think they still give you DUI.
Yeah, it's still a motor vehicle moving in for action with that, so.
I, I, you know, just.
Yeah.
I, I, for interest, I do notice that there, we have a citizen that drives their electric skateboard, electrified skateboard down the street, and, uh, I'm actually glad to see it in the street because I've seen it on the sidewalk. And at the speed it was traveling down the sidewalk, it looked like it might be a problem if somebody stepped out of a business. And, uh, so, you know, I just wonder, you know, we got, again, gotta be careful, be paying attention when you're driving, you know?
Yeah, skateboards, uh, come to their own thing, you know, like riding them on the street or the sidewalk. That's something you might want to check out, I guess.
Yeah, I'll have to take a look at it. I'm not.
You know.
Not real familiar.
They used, I know, they used to not be able to ride them on the street without getting in trouble. And I definitely couldn't ride them on the side. So maybe that's something we can check out.
Yeah, we can find those answers.
Any other questions regarding ordinance, proposed ordinance thirteen fifty-nine? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen fifty-nine, uh, regarding the twenty-twenty-two standard traffic ordinance and authorize the mayor to sign.
Oh, my goodness.
Councilman McCarty makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lowen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council. Councilman by?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen fifty-nine is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Next item up is municipal court order for one-on-one South Main repairs, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, thank you, sir. So we've been dealing with one-on-one South Main. That's the Quick Flex, uh, Rayshack building. That's kind of the shorthand for it. Um, it's owned by Panda Properties Management, which is controlled by Mr. George Yang. Uh, we've had a lot of trouble finding Mr. Yang. The word on the street from some of his tenants is that he maybe went back to China, or went to China, I guess I should say. Um, so we've been having some trouble getting him, and we've been going through this matter in municipal court for several months. Uh, actually, over a year now, we've had it kind of in municipal court, trying to get some resolution to this. Uh, that building, the one-on-one South Main building, has a giant hole in the roof, uh, which creates a lot of issues for not only that building, but the tenants, uh, you know, in, in the Panda Kitchen, and also Mama Sees, and then, you know, it has a neighboring, it shares a wall with the neighboring building, uh, which there's a lot of concern that if something was to happen to this building, it may damage that building condition. Um, so, uh, you know, aside from that, it's one of our main corners in downtown. It's kind of an anchor building, so uh, we have a vested interest in making sure that it's in decent condition. Uh, ideally, I think we'd like to have, you know, maybe a change in ownership or, or Mr. Yang stepping up and making some corrections to that building and putting it back to productive use, uh, but so far that has not been the case. Um, so we had a hearing on, uh, a scheduled hearing on August second. Uh, we notified Mr. Yang, uh, by a certified letter. Uh, we were unable to, to find him. Those both came back. We had to try, we tried to have him served in the county, uh, which he's, uh, where the, where the property is, or the ownership of the property is, and they were unable to serve him. Um, so the, uh, judge, municipal judge, allowed us to do publication on that, so we published the notification that we were having the hearing, met all the statutory requirements for that. Had the hearing on the second, uh, no one, no one came, uh, from, from the ownership of the building. There's also a lien on that building. Uh, there's mortgage from Impris Bank, and so uh, we've been keeping them in the loop as well on that, so it's one of those things that we're, we're trying to, to meet all those qualifications and make sure that everything is, is being well notified. Uh, after that hearing, as a result of that hearing, Judge Chance issued an order authorizing us, the city, to remediate the immediate health and safety issues on the building. Uh, we've got a copy of that notice, which was also published and, and sent with certified mail to the address on file, but I don't, I don't recall if that's come back yet or not, but as undeliverable, but we, we anticipate that that will be the case. So we've got, we've got a couple of things to think about. It is, um, obviously, it's a kind of an important building on Main Street. Uh, we had many roofing come out, which you've got a copy of that inspection quote there from them. Uh, to repair the roof is fifteen thousand ninety-three dollars. Uh, they're anticipating that's an extension of the life of additional five to seven years. So it's not in as bad a shape as some of the other roofs that we've done this year, which we've seen numerous roofs we've had to. Uh, for complete replacement of that roof is forty-eight thousand, and that's not necessarily something we have to do with this order. Um, in addition to the roof work, there's also some masonry work, um, if you'll noticed it, uh, at that building, the judge has ordered us to put barricades around it, uh, in order to prevent any potential masonry falling, uh, to prevent people from walking underneath that, creating liability for everybody. Um, we, we had a previous quote for that, which we need to get, we're in the process of trying to get updates on. Uh, that was about ten thousand dollars for that as well, so. You know, all in, it's, uh, you know, approaching twenty-five, it, it'll probably be closer to thirty thousand dollars to make those repairs. So the interesting thing with this, uh, you know, we would be, you know, under obligation to make these repairs if we chose to do so, if we approved those repairs. Uh, what would happen is the owner of that building would receive an invoice for that. Uh, we would try to bill them directly, given the fact that we can't find them at this point. Uh, I would highly doubt that that would get paid unless the bank stepped in and pay that. Um, so what would likely happen is we would end up being, uh, a tax lien on that property, which, you know, we wouldn't recover immediately. It would probably end up going through the normal process of, um, of foreclosure, I guess, is what it is. It's tax foreclosure process, so. Uh, it, it kind of becomes an interesting deal. I'm. uh, it it kind of becomes an interesting deal. I'm not, you know, we we have an interest in making sure that the building is corrected. Uh, we have, you know, court orders to do so. Uh, we can start those repairs as early as September first. There is still a period where the owner can come in and, you know, provide us with some sort of plan and provide the court with some sort of plan as to what he's gonna do. I, you know, I'm not, not thinking that's gonna be very likely at this point, based on the conversations you've had. Um, with Empress Bank being involved in this, they may have some, I mean, they have a vested interest in it as well. They don't want to see that property go through, you know, tax sale or something like that, so I'm not exactly sure how that's gonna go. Um, what we're looking at today is if we want to uh do the roof repair, you know, it's obviously it's fifteen thousand dollars, so we had to to approve that. Uh, and then we'll we'll have the masonry repair come along after that, so probably hopefully in September. Um. So, you know, we gotta put it out there and kind of see what what you guys wanna do with this and you could wait uh until another meeting uh to get period in place so that they they would have an opportunity to respond uh more. Judge wasn't very confident that was gonna happen and that's why he gave the order that we could start on September one if we wanted to. That that is, that is the situation.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Have you uh reached out to to Empress Bank and and tried to get their thoughts on this matter?
I have, yeah. I, every every one of these notifications we've sent directly to Empress Bank. Um, from the way I understood it with the person I'm working on who's a a loan manager, their legal department is having some of the similar frustrations in finding Mr. Yang and Panda Properties Management that we are.
So, you know, I realize that, you know, we're kind of between a brick and a hard place. Pun intended. Um, but uh, you know, I I I just find it a little hard to understand why they have a very clear and in present financial interest in this property and why there seems to be no willingness on their part to be involved in this remediation.
I do not have an answer for that. They have not provided us with any anything really, other than, you know, thanks for the notifications and we're working on it.
I would almost say before we spend any money, maybe we should try to get Empress Bank to do, I mean, I'm not saying they're not trying, but maybe just think about that before we spend.
Well, it's their asset. I mean, you know, it's a community asset as well. It's a historic building. We cannot let the building fall down. That's just a fact. I mean, we just can't allow that to happen. However, you know, again, I, you know, I guess, you know, what I'm doing here is publicly calling out Empress Bank and asking them to step up because they they are the first lien holder on this property, although if we step in and do it, then uh I guess we become, we we step in ahead of them if, is that correct, Andrew?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a timing issue there, but if if uh if we expend funds and assess it back against the property, it's treated just like a tax lien, which you know, goes goes prior to the to the first lien.
So I would think.
But it, but it, oh, sorry, I didn't mean.
No, go ahead, go ahead, please.
Uh, I mean, but once it, if it if it ends up in foreclosure, you know, then it's a matter of who gets paid first out of the proceeds.
So uh as as city attorney, do you have an opinion in this matter?
Um. I think seeing what cooperation we can get from Empress is probably a good idea before we expend that amount of funds. Um, there is always, as I mentioned, the timing issue, which is if we start expending funds on the property before you you know, which you can't assess it against the property until you're done. But Empress starts taking some kind of foreclosure action. Um, you know, we we could get stuck in the middle there where we're not done with our with our work and we haven't filed our lien and and our assessment against the property and that presents a risk to the city. I think we we want to think about mitigate before we spend any money on it.
Thank you.
Forty-one Empress Bank.
Is their property, they need to fix the roof?
Have them fix the roof.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, I mean, and assess that against the loan that Mr. Yang currently has.
Was there an issue with the health department? Is that why we're getting put into this? Cause I thought I had heard from some people Panda Kitchen and Mama Sees at the health department.
Oh.
Was getting involved on that cause the hole in the roof or something.
Right, yeah, so they had some action. Well, there were, there were some talk about, I'm not a hundred percent sure how that has worked, but
Right.
You know, they're operating in a in a building that is considered, you know, a part of that, but.
Right.
Um, and so the roof in question that has the hole is at a higher elevation of the thought is that the leaking and the, you know, penetrations within that roof are are running down and causing issues in theirs. Um, right, theirs appear to be in decent shape based on our inspections, but um, yeah, there there is some, that that's not really why we got involved. We got complaints about it, cause there's literally water flowing into the building. Uh, so there was concerns from the neighbors, there was concerns by, you know, the adjoining property owners, uh the other two people in that building, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's it's an issue. Uh, you know, it's it's a situation where uh, the ownership has not taken care of the property and uh, you know, has has led it devolve to a point where now we have, we have decisions to make.
Right.
He's back in Taiwan, huh?
I have no idea. That that's speculation. That is what we heard from a couple of the tenants that rent from it. So, and I can tell you one hundred percent that we have been unable to find them, so.
So, you know, again, based on uh, based on uh advice of our city attorney, it seems like the worst thing that could happen, even worse than the situation as it stands today, is for us to expend taxpayer money and then have that end up being unsecured and uh so unable to uh to recoup that that expenditure. And so, you know, I think it really behooves um Empress Bank and and uh I guess I would, you know, uh, maybe, maybe we would uh ask you, Andrew, to uh, I don't know how involved you've been up to this point with Empress Bank, but maybe uh hearing from you might uh, might uh spark some interest on their part to at least be more communicative with us.
Certainly, Matt and I can talk and I'm I'm happy to get involved, however I can be helpful.
Oh. Sometimes, sometimes a a a carrot's in it, uh, you know, the required methodology and sometimes it's a stick. Okay, thank you. So is it the council's desire that uh we table this issue for and wait to hear back from uh from uh Matt and Andrew in terms of their communication with Empress Bank? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. So we'll table, do we need, we don't need to take a vote to table that, do we?
Uh, yeah.
And and it would still be, I mean, nothing changes with your September first date.
No.
As you could bring it to the next.
Yeah. We can be into future, I mean, you know, September first and the judge's order is just the the day we can start to, so.
So then uh is there a motion to uh table this item until our next meeting? Motion. Councilman by move moves to table, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Driggers, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the item is tabled. Um, next item is our executive session for personnel for a period of twenty minutes. Does somebody have that motion in front of them? And we care to make it.
We, before we jump into that, um, sorry, interrupt. Uh, we've got Andrew on on Zoom and uh the motion has for Andrew to be included in the executive session. I don't know, Andrew, if that's something you want to, it's a, you know, personnel issue, but I don't know that it's a legal, legal issue necessarily. Uh, my my only concern is having you on Zoom and trying to figure this out technically.
Would would it be easier if if I, I mean, can I call in somehow? And I can log off of Zoom and then call in, would that work better for you?
That I think would work, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I will, I will.
Go ahead. We'll we'll have you call Matt's phone. So who has a motion?
Okay. I moved to the city council recess and the executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant of K S A seven-five dash four-three-one-nine B one for a period of twenty minutes. The meeting will include the city administrator and city attorney. The open meeting will resume at seven thirty-one.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Sorry.
We have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we are now in executive session, thank you.
Andrew, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we are uh going out of executive session, so if you want to log back into Zoom, you're welcome to do so.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call the uh uh city council meeting back into open session. Uh, let the record state that no action was taken during the executive session. And we are now on to city administrators' report, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. Let me let Andrew back in here. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to kind of go over a few things. Uh, new school year, we got that handed out. I think we've had a really successful time uh at Tabor. It's the first time we've really ever been part of their welcome stuff and I think it went really well. Uh, I I wasn't able to be, I was on vacation the first two times, but I think it went pretty well. I don't lose out there a all the times, I think.
Yep.
And then we had uh, we had uh parents orientation, uh parents panel for for freshmen. Uh, Lou Lou represented us there, did an outstanding job there. Trying to make people feel welcome and that they can trust us with their children, uh which is really important. And then uh, you know, we had the downtown event, which I think went really well. Uh, I was surprised by that. We had a lot of really positive comments. I mean, we were trying to do something different, but man, we had a ton of people. Everybody had a good time. Uh, you know, we had the dunk tank out, the fire department was out there shooting hoses and uh, the cruise nine went really well, so I think it, I think it was a really positive experience. How a lot of good feedback on that, so. Um, and as far as, you know, four-ten starts this week and so one of the things that PD is doing is enhancing its presence. Uh, they they've always done traffic stops and everything, but now they're gonna be more in the building. Uh, just walking around, trying to make friends. Um, so if you hear from your kids or your your grandkids or whoever that there's police officers walking around in the building, yeah, that's that's intentional. We're not actually trying to to do anything uh there, but just building good relationships. We're actually doing a lot on on Tabor too. Uh, they've really worked hard with Chris Williams and the Criminal Justice Department to to make sure that we're on campus, we're eating lunch with students. Uh, they know that we're we're there or there to help and to keep it safe, so it's been really positive so far, I think, and we're gonna hope to keep that momentum moving forward. Um.
In fact, they uh participated in the student meeting on Saturday morning.
Yep.
Our, we had our entire five-man full-time te- police department team up on stage so that the students could see who they were and uh hear hear from Chief Hebert and as they were leaving, I let the students know that their job was job and their their only job was to keep everybody in the community, including them, safe. Their job was not to write tickets, their job was not to make arrests, but in the course of keeping everyone safe, there will be tickets issued and there will be arrests made, but you know, just understand that's not their first priority. Their first priority is to keep everybody safe. And that's the way we want it.
For sure, it worked out. I think that hopefully that message was heard loud and clear. We'll see.
We used to do roast or Halloween time.
Oh, yeah.
After said our jokes with you all colors.
Yeah, well, well.
And it worked that bad.
We'll we'll stay away from that. Put that in a minute. Yeah. Uh, training with EMS, you know, I know there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of change with EMS. They've got a lot of staffing issues, but I want to let everybody know that uh, we have been working closely, our fire department, when I say we, fire department's been working closely with EMS to help provide that service uh while they have vacancies. Uh, I know that EMS has hired one of our our part-time, not part-time, our volunteers uh as a paramedic and so she's on the department now and is going through the paramedic certification, so uh, that's good, but we've also been able to to start re uh retraining with them. So we've been doing bi-weekly training uh with EMS to get ourselves familiar with that. Uh, we used to do a lot more of that when they went to a full-time professional service that sort of went away. Uh, but we're we're, you know, back to help and we're eager to help. Uh, what we have are are some of our folks are uh E M T Rs, which allows them to be uh drivers essentially in assistance and so uh, right now we only have a handful of those people still certified on our department, but they've already been out helping. Um, Chief Steckity's been on a couple of calls already, driving the ambulance and assisting with codes, um, or assisting paramedics, so uh, we're trying to help out. That's, I think that's the the core message there. I think we're we're happy and and thrilled to be able to be back with uh the EMS staff and and be able to work with them again and hopefully we can serve in that capacity.
That's another reason, again, quite honestly, that uh I really wanted that that uh EMS station where it is, because when we build our new fire station, we're gonna be located right there, right next to them. And you know, the idea that that uh we will continue to collaborate and cooperate and in uh in back each other up, I hope we'll just get, continue to get better as time goes on, but that's uh, that's another reason, just other than it being, you know, the right place to be.
I'm gonna figure out whether they quit letting the fire department help. I always, I thought that was a bad call because used to help them all the time. Here's a question, you know, if if you couldn't treat somebody, you could always carry some.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You don't need some kind of certificate to carry a bag.
Right, right. Yeah, so we're back in doing that.
That's good, I think that's really good.
And we're happy to do it. I know the fire department was happy with it. They really enjoy being able to help, so. Uh, pool hours and the pool structure, just, you know, everybody, uh, we started yesterday, we had to change change our hours. We're kind of winding down for the summer. All of our lifeguards basically went back to school. Um, and so, you know, Kara's not the only employee, but one of the only people we have right now who's still around. Um, and so we've kind of went, but we've gone into our limited hours, so that's, you know, uh lap swims, toddler time, we still do that. Uh, we actually open up for teacher, teacher swim in the evening, so teachers get to come out and float around, that's really popular, uh and lap swim at night too, so those are, we're winding down and Kara will actually be here on at the September twentieth meeting to to do her annual report on the pool and kind of how it went this summer. I think it's gone fairly well. Um. Had normal kind of issues, so uh one of the things we're gonna need to talk about though is maintenance. Uh, we've got the play structure and the zero entry. Um, it's starting to have some issues. Biggest issue with it though is that you it, you can't see into the structure and so it's actually kind of unsafe. Um, we've had some issues with kids climbing in there and you know, if it's a shorter child, you can't see through it. It's not transparent in any way, and so the lifeguards had some issues maintaining safety on that. Uh, and it is starting to deteriorate. The pool is getting at that age where we have to start thinking about maybe some fixture things, so uh Kara's been looking at some spray kind of fixtures. We're talking like, um I don't know how to describe it other than like a mushroom or an umbrella type thing to replace it and something you'd almost see in a spray park. Uh, but it's uh one of those things that that's kind of what she would like to go to and I think I I would support that decision, cause I think it probably is time to to look at a different structure. Uh, and we still haven't resolved the pool heater issue yet. We're still looking at solar stuff, but we haven't haven't been able to get anybody to help us with just that yet. Uh, treasurer's report, you got that there. Um, there's a couple of things to note on there, two things to note on there. Uh, the June report, uh, there's negative balance in the not, in the return checks. There's an issue with the journal entries there and and accounting system, so we have to fix that. Uh, and then there's negative balance in the equipment reserve. That's due to the timing of the lease purchase agreements for the new equipment and uh uh backhoe and trailer, so uh that actually has been corrected in in July, so when we closed on that, it got a little the timing got a little weird, so. We didn't want to move it into a different fund because that didn't feel correct either. So. Um that's what it looks like. If you have any questions on that, I have an answer. Health insurance savings report. We got the first insurance savings report of the year, six thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-three cents in July is what we. Ended up saving compared to what we were at. Uh claim reserve fund right now is sitting at sixty-four thousand nine eighty-nine fifty-six. So. Uh pretty good first thirteen months. It's actually above kind of the projection. So it's been pretty pretty successful there. Uh superintendent now wanted to share Clint Corby, uh our new superintendent. He. Uh he's also the chair of the rec commission. He sent us a note just to say thanks for being good partners and. I met with Clint this morning to talk about a couple of things. I'm I'm pretty positive on where we're headed with that relationship. Uh so it's been very, pretty positive. So. Uh that's, that is all I have, sir, unless there's questions.
Any questions? Hearing none. Um we are now at our second and final public comment opportunity. Again, I see no members of the public online, nor do I see any present in the room. So we will move on to council comments. Councilman by.
Nothing to do.
Councilman McCarty.
Nothing.
Councilman Lowen.
Please to see all the pipes over there. Yeah, those splash part pipes just. That's a, that's a plumber's nightmare. Either that or it's a, or it's an exciting thing for him to just figure out how to do.
It's now become uh come a uh my, on my route to work every morning. They uh I come up Washington Street and make a right onto A Street and. Or left onto A Street and then a right down the alley. So I can uh eyeball what's going on there. This morning I had a chance to uh eyeball some of our city staff. And uh working there, which made me feel good. I've also had the opportunity to uh check in on uh. On uh votes construction. And their subcontractors. So that's, that's good. We did get a report from them yesterday. An updated report and uh it looks like. We're still kind of end of September timeframe for this first first stage, but uh. Hopefully it'll still be warm enough by then for the mayor to uh. You know, be very foolish in his swimsuit out there splashing around, but. I intend as soon as we can turn it on to be out there and be one of the first ones splashing. So I'll be the biggest kid there.
Ready for that street to open back up too, so we actually.
That has been a. That project has gone on way too long. We've had. So many issues with getting that replaced and then, you know, people on vacation and then we had half the staff out with COVID and then we. It's just been kind of a comedy of errors.
Well, at the dealership, it just exploded and so. We're, there's nowhere to park over there.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but if I'm so honest, I would, I'm not sorry. I'm kind of like Reese that Reese's commercial. He's not sorry. Councilman Lowen, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
So that's. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Councilman Driggers.
No, don't say.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.